Welcome and good evening. Happy New Year. Welcome to the Shakopee City Council meeting for January 4th, 2020, two, 2022. Item number one, if we could call the roll.
Councilmember Brennan, here. Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras.
Here.
Mayor Mars.
Here. Thank you very much. If we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To item number three, approval of the agenda. Is there any corrections, deletions, Mr. Reynolds?
No changes to the main agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for their discussion. Discussion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Moving ahead to item number four, consent business. Mr. Reynolds, any changes?
Yes, sir. I'll be pulling 4A6 off the consent agenda and we will then hear that on the main agenda.
We will hear 4A6 where?
We'll pull it in right for business removed from consent.
Oh, okay. Thank you. And, Counselor Lehman?
Remove 4A3 and 4A4.
Okay. Others? Others? Is not, Counselor Lehman?
Vote the consent agenda as modified.
I have a motion and a second for the modified consent agenda with three items being pulled, 4A3, 4A4, and 4A6. No discussion. Before we vote on the modified consent agenda, we will read it into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. These are the consent agenda items for 4 January 2022. 4A1 approves the city council meeting minutes for 21 December of 2021. 4A2 adopts resolution number R2022-TAC01, designating individuals authorized to perform certain banking transactions. 4A5 adopts resolution number R2022-TAC007, approving the proposed amendments to the municipal legislative committee joint and cooperative agreement. 4A7 sets a public hearing date for Tuesday, February 1st, 2022 regarding the establishment of a tax increment spending plan. 4A8 designates the Shakopee Valley News as the official newspaper for the city of Shakopee in 2022, and designates the city website as the official notice and advertisement venue for transportation project bids for 2022. 4B1 approves the following purchases: four 2022 Ford Police Interceptors from Tin Vord Ford with equipment and setup from Emergency Automotive Technologies Incorporated for $204,802.8. An AEBI TerraTrak Slope Mower from Trac Incorporated for $141,392. Schwars Avalance Street Sweeper from Titan Machinery for $290,528. Two 2022 Mack Snow Plow Trucks from Nuss Truck and Equipment with equipment and setup from Towmaster Truck Equipment Company for $523,128. Four John Deere Mooers from Kibbley Equipment for $37,860. And the declaration of listed equipment designated as surplus. 4B2 adopts resolution number R2022-TAC003, receiving a report and calling for a public hearing for the 2022 full depth pavement reconstruction project, which is CIP-TAC22-TAC001. And 4B3 approves a change order for the Riverbluffs Improvement Project, which is CIF-TAC20-TAC007 in the amount of $39,900.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. I have a motion and a second for the modified consent agenda. The modified consent agenda has been read into the public record. There would be no further discussion. By voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you all very much. Let's move ahead to item number five. Now I'd like to call on any resident that would like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome on an item not on the agenda. Mr. Reynolds, have we received any electronic communication?
No, sir, we have not.
Seeing none, we would move ahead then to item number six, which is business removed from consent. And we will start with 4A3. Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. 4A3 and 4A4 kind of go together, so... 4A3, obviously, I think everybody here knows my position on TIF. I'm looking for jobs and wages that are above an income that would require or allow any additional public taxpayer subsidies because they're making too much money. A lot of what we're doing here is not job-related. I prefer the money to go back to the taxpayers. So, I took it off so I could vote against it, but I know where the rest of the council is, so...
Counselor Whiting? This is about bonds. I don't... To me, it's less about TIF. The payment of the bonds is through the TIF. But this, I like to even call it the 12th Avenue Bonds, I think would be more appropriate, being paid back through the Canterbury TIF. So with that, I would offer for 4A3, resolution R2022-006, declaring official intent regarding the reimbursement of certain expenditures from the proceeds of the bonds to be issued by the city.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion, further discussion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Thank you very much. Let's move ahead then to 4A4. Counselor Lehman?
Well, as you, council is aware, I wasn't in favor of purchasing the workforce center. Should've had a for sale sign up, let the private market deal with it, and if they had a project that was in, under consideration for the city, they could come forward at that time. Now we, you know, we didn't plan on how to pay for it, now we're coming back to figure out how to reimburse ourselves. Just doesn't seem like it's very planned to me, so I still don't know what's going on there. There's rumors about what's going to go on that site, but rumors are rumors. So once again, Mayor, I took it off inconsistent with my philosophy.
Okay. Counselor Brennan?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number R2022-004, which allows the city to apply bond proceeds from the 2028 TIF bonds to the cost of the acquisition and demolition of the workforce center.
Second.
A motion and a second for this. This is... We've done this before, very commonplace. So, Counselor Whiting?
This has been transparent, too. This is something we've talked about. We knew we were intending to pay back with the proceeds. We just, this is part of the paperwork. It allows us to do that, so...
Motion on the table and a second. Further discussion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Thank you. Let's move ahead then to 4A6. And, Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I pulled this because there was some concern, and it's, I think it's justified, that the original resolution did not actually talk about how much the current county sales tax is. And so I have readjusted, and you all have a new resolution, R2022-TAC008, which talks about the transportation sales tax at one-half cent. Just to be clear, that's one-half cent of every dollar, or 0.5% is what we're talking about here. I guess that's it, because it's...
And the revised resolution is here before us, and note in the yellow at the bottom. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor and council, I contacted staff on this issue specifically because the percentage was not listed in the original resolution. The current percentage is one-half cent or 0.5%. That's what the current rate is today and has been for the last five years. It was a five-year sales, transportation tax. It's going to come up for either, for discussion to renew. They'd like to renew it. I'm not one to support taxes. This is not a new tax, it's an existing tax. I do support this being renewed, and the reason is, is Shakopee has benefited tremendously from this tax in many, many projects that we can all see. 69 Overpass, 169 improvements down to the 101 Bridge, 101 Bridge, 41 interchange, the list goes on and on. So we've seen a lot of, a lot of leveraging of federal dollars, tiger grants, state dollars, mendet dollars right here in Scott County, so... Large, large percentage of these dollars are coming from outside of Scott County to our various venues and paying this tax for using our infrastructure, so I'm supportive of this. There was talk of possibly a seven-year extension. It looks like they're looking for 10. I'm not sure that that's been determined. I get it from a CIP standpoint and some of the totality of some of these projects. We're seeing the project right now out by Jordan on 169, the, what is it, 61 and 169 Overpass and stuff. That's been in the works for a while. It's, it's going to take years to get that done. So I think, looking at 10 years, I, I can understand it from the planning side.
No, and it's great that, you know, I think we have benefited as well. It's interesting that you bring up visitors from outside that come to our entertainment districts, and maybe in the future we'll have more of them. Counselor Whiting?
Thank you. As Counselor Lehman mentioned, this original tax is, was going to sunset and be ending, so they, and we knew that wasn't going to really happen. I always assumed that they were going to try and reissue it, and, you know, it's, it's a good way to pay for roads. I didn't support it originally the last time because it didn't include County Road 83, and maybe even the county is wishing they would have included that now, but... But this, I see, they're trying to create in the county thoroughfares, east-west and some north-south, so that, so that we have some county roads that are approved, so you can get, get to places where you need to go. So I, I do support this. Nobody wants to pay taxes, but this one actually goes to a specific cause and project.
And stays local.
And pay, and, as you mentioned, paid for by other people.
Yeah.
Not only visitors, but, you know, the businesses that are in town are also helping drive some of those, too, so...
You know, Mayor, it's on automotive parts, and the automotive are the ones that use the infrastructure. So, it seems to be a targeted to the, and, to the user. And I do believe they're required to not only spend these dollars in Scott County, but the, they have to have a CIP in advance showing the projects over the course of the time.
Or listed, yeah.
So it's very, very transparent, and, like I said, many of these, many of these projects are well over what the county is participating with this tax, but having that ability to say, gee, we've got X amount of dollars to put toward, you know, maybe 41 and 169 interchange. When you have some dollars to put into the project, it makes it much easier and raises up the project in the eyes of whether it's the state mendot transportation fund or even the federal highway fund. So, it, it's a win-win both ways for the infrastructure of Scott County.
Okay. Mark, would you like to make a motion?
I would, Mayor. I'll offer resolution R2022-008 and move for its adoption with the known, with the change in the wordage in front of us.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much. That does complete our business removed from consent, and now we'd move ahead to item number seven. And I'd entertain a motion to stand in recess for our EDA meeting. Counselor Contreras?
Make a motion to recess onto our EDA meeting.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to recess for our EDA. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. We are in recess, and Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I call to order the January 4th Shakopee Economic Development Authority meeting. And if I can get an approval of the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconds? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Next on the agenda is the consent business, and there are four items on the consent business. Number 3A is the EDA minutes. 3B is decertification of TIF number 16 Raar expansion. 3C is interfund loan resolution gravel pit site, and 3D is interfund loan resolution workforce center. Mr. Lehman?
Madam Chair, I'd like to remove 3C and 3D from the consent agenda.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Whiting?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution E2022-003, allows the reimbursement from possible TIF funds for staff and consultant time related to administration, administering, establishing a TIF district.
Madam Chair, point of order, I think we need to approve the consent agenda as modified prior.
Oh, okay. We'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified.
Thank you. There's been a motion and a second by Contreras. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes five to zero. And Mr. Lehman pulled off item number 3C and 3D. Number 3C is the interfund loan resolution gravel pit site. And did you have any comments on that?
I can make the motion, restate the motion if you like.
Mr. Whiting?
Resolution, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution E2022-03, allows for the reimbursement from possible TIF funds for staff and consultant time related to administering and establishing a TIF district.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? Mr. Mars?
Madam President, I'll second that motion.
Okay. We've been a motion and a second. May I have any discussion? Mr. Lehman?
Okay, we are on item 3C that was removed, correct?
That's right.
Okay. So if I'm reading this correctly, we are going to do an interfund loan to cover any costs associated with developing and administering a tax increment financing district if we decide to on the gravel pit site.
That's right.
Okay, so, do we know what's going to go on this site? Do we have a proposal? Do we know how many jobs it creates, what the wages are, or anything like this, or are we getting ahead of ourselves?
Mr. Mars?
I don't think we're approving a TIF district.
We are approving possible funds for staff and consultant time related to administering a possible TIF district? Is there any staff had comment on that? Mr. Reinhardt? Mr. Reynolds, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, essentially, all this does is makes a determination that we will be reimbursed for any expenses that we do. If, if we don't establish a TIF district, then it's moot. But if we do establish a TIF district, we're putting everyone on notice that we expect to be repaid for our expenses as part of that. Ultimately, whether or not there's a TIF district, it's a big decision. And I think, you know, as I've said before, that, you know, it can go either way. That's for another day. All this is, is saying we expect to be repaid for any funds that we put in.
Yeah, and I, and I agree. I, that's outlined in item number seven, that the, this does not create a TIF district, and the interfund loan transfer will be repayable from any available source of funds. And it only exists if there's a TIF, a TIF established. Mr. Lehman?
Shouldn't we be doing it reverse? If somebody comes in and is seeking a TIF, and staff could get the details, bring it to us, and see if there's support for that before they spend time on it? Or this is spend time on it and then see if you're going to get reimbursed later?
Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, as, as we talked about, I believe it was our last meeting, when we hired a lobbyist specifically to talk about this issue. I ultimately want to get the money that we paid the lobbyist back if we do move forward and establish a TIF district. And so, we are already incurring expenses, and the city, if someone wants to request a TIF district, the city has to do something in response to that. So, the whole point being is, is that if we do, and we are currently in the process of generating expenses, we expect to be repaid for those efforts, and we already are doing that.
One, one last question.
Mr. Lehman?
What is the comp plan land use zoning for the area?
Mr. Kurski?
Chair and board members, so the land use for this is single-family residential, multifamily residential, and commercial.
Okay.
Isn't that classified, classified as mixed use?
Yes.
Yeah, alright.
Those are the uses that can go in.
That's been that way for 10 plus years.
So the comp plan, which was adopted for 2040, shows those specific land uses.
Mr. Whiting?
You know, when the city puts a lot of time into trying to develop these sites and has to put so much effort into specific sites for different reasons, we should be reimbursed for those costs. Those costs add up. This one specifically, we, as Mr. Reynolds mentioned, hired a lobbyist for. Our intent is to try and do something with this site, so we want to get paid back for that, and I don't think the taxpayers should be left on the hook for that because staff time will be eaten up on this project. So this allows us to be reimbursed for that.
Mr. Lehman?
Madam Chair, I almost said mayor. I don't understand why we're hiring a lobbyist to lobby for TIF in a gravel pit where I can't come to any conclusion that there's any hardship to develop when all the ground has been dug up and put back.
I believe that the, the hiring of the lobbyist occurred at the last meeting, and that's already been a decision made by the council? So that's not what's before us today? Mr. Kurski?
Chair and board members, yes, the lobbyist was hired at the last council meeting. The reason why is that current TIF legislation, you can't create a district there. You have to have special legislation, and... You have to have special legislation and Adana, Savage, Apple Valley, Maple Grove and Burnsville all have gotten that special legislation. So you have to go to the legislature and ask whether you would have the ability to create that district using special legislation. If the legislature gives you that permission, then you could consider creating a TIF district there. But gravel pits right now because of typically the amount of remediation that occurs there are not allowed under the current TIF legislation. And so all of those cities, Adana, I think was the earliest for Centennial Lakes. Um, Savage got it for the Prior Lake Aggregate Industries. Um, Apple Valley's got, I think, a four hundred acre site that's a gravel pit and then Maple Grove and Burnsville.
Thank you. Mister Lehman?
Just seems very odd to me that the landowner makes their money digging out all the minerals and then turns around and makes money by getting a TIF district to use the tax, future tax dollars back into their development of their property.
Mister Reynolds?
Great point for a future meeting. Uh, I think that that's that what you've outlined is exactly what this council needs to make a determination on. Uh, but that's not what this particular motion is about.
Mister Mars?
Yeah, this this is calls for the ability to get reimbursed. It's not a, it's not a step forward for a TIF district involving a developer. I think we had, uh, associated costs with development, um, at our old city hall site. I believe we had associated costs with, uh, uh, the, uh, company that did some abatement work on our, uh, Shakopee Flats business, uh, development, I think. Um, all those costs that were incurred before you moved forward with the project were incorporated into the ability to get those dollars back from TIF. This just sets the stage if we ever do that.
That's right. Is there any other discussion or questions? Anybody are 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 willing to make a a motion?
I think we did, no.
I'll make the the motion. Um, I'd like to adopt Resolution number E twenty-two-two dash zero three to allow for interfund loans for advance of certain costs in connection with a potential future tax increment district, um, financing district.
Got a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Waiting seconds. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Um, next is item number three D, which is the interfund loan res- resolution for workforce center acquisition and demolition. And Mister Whiting?
Madam Chair, I took it off consent to be consistent with the action by council to vote against it consistent with my past action.
Mister Mars?
Just to reiterate that, uh, this interphone, interfund loan resolution for the acquisition and demo again, this is exactly what the EDA does. It, we already own the property to the slightly to the west. Um, that's a just a flat parcel. Uh, we purchased this one after Scott County did market that property in the open market and found no buyers at a much higher price. Um, but our EDA is assembling properties for the opportunity for future development and, uh, and this this loan will help that. And, uh, that's kind of my basis for, uh, supporting this.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other comments?
You gonna do a resolution?
Can I get a motion? Mister Mars?
Madam Chair, I would offer, uh, Resolution number E two zero-two-two dash zero zero-two approving an interfund loan for advance of certain costs in connection with tax increment finance district number eighteen.
A motion and a second by Whiting. Um, is there any other discussion? Mister Mars?
Yeah, just one other comment. As the EDA assembles property, this TIF district at Canterbury, uh, which was approved several years ago, has already seen some development on it. If we can get more development on it, it raises the overall value. The TIF gets paid back faster. We just had an example, a prime example of RAR being decertified, uh, over four years early because they've paid the the TIF. And it's been resolved and now that that whole thing and the look at that corridor, the West End, that business has helped our community. Um, and they're now gonna be on the tax rolls at a higher level than they started with.
Was it nine hundred thousand dollars, eh?
Mister Lehman?
Madam Chair, the the problem is you could build a trillion dollar, five thousand room apartment building if it pays zero dollars into the general fund for basic city services. The basic city services going to that big apartment building is paid for by the rest of your taxpayers. Where where RAR created jobs for the community and they're they're they have great benefits, long-term employment.
You could make the same argument that they didn't for the years, didn't pay for public services.
Okay, I'm gonna bring us back.
Okay, thank you.
Um, is there any other discussion? Okay, can I, um, is anybody interested in making a motion? Or we do have a motion?
We have a motion.
Okay, motion and a second on the table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Um, next on the agenda is the EDA bill list. Um, has everybody had a chance to look at the bill list? Um, I think we all received it in the email. And it's been posted to the website if I'm correct. Okay, number five is adjournment. Um, Miss Contreras?
Thank you. I'd make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, February first, uh, twenty twenty-two at seven P M.
There's been a motion and a second by Whiting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. And we go back to the regular meeting of the council.
Uh, welcome back to the City of, uh, Shakopee City Council Meeting for January fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Happy New Year. We just are coming out of our EDA meeting and we're moving ahead on our agenda. And, uh, we are at nine A one, the one sixty-nine, uh, Pedbridge, uh, layout. And, um, Adam will present.
Alright, good evening, everyone. Um, I'm Adam Benson. I'm with the city's engineering department. Um, I'll be giving a brief presentation on the trunk highway one sixty-nine pedestrian bridge, kind of as it relates to the layout and the aesthetics of the bridge. Um, so to give some brief context, um, we came to council in August with a, uh, proposed, um, preferred bridge layout and aesthetic plan. Um, that plan was approved and we've kind of come to tonight where we have a MINDOT approved layout, which you can see here. Um, it's got some things such as a profile and some typical sections that we'll be using and some other MINDOT formalities. Um, so we've reached that milestone and we do, uh, move forward with our final design, uh, with this layout. Um, and then we also have, uh, some proposed aesthetics that we will be revising. Um, we hit some snags along the way between our August date and, uh, tonight. So I'll touch base on those in a little bit. Um, as you can see here, this is kind of a blow up of the last slide. Uh, the figure shows basically the layout that was approved by MINDOT. Um, it's also been approved by council, very similar to the one, uh, that was provided in August. Uh, some minor tweaks here and there, uh, just to meet some design criteria, but overall this is, uh, the exact same, uh, layout that we showed in August and was approved. Um, it's also been the one that we were, uh, using to procure the easements on the FedEx site that we'll need for the bridge and trail along with the retaining wall too. Um, so we did hit a snag, uh, in our aesthetics plan. Um, we were originally gonna match the aesthetics in the, uh, Marshall Road Bridge, the new, uh, County Road seventeen pedestrian bridge that's being constructed there. So that one had green chain link fence, green, uh, light poles and a green stripe along the the bridge. Their contractor, the county notified us that their contractor wasn't able to obtain green chain link fence. Apparently, nobody can get it anymore. So they had to kind of reroute and come up, uh, with a different aesthetic plan for their bridge on the fly. So they'll be using a black rail. Since our original plan was to match that bridge and kind of create some similarities along the one sixty-nine corridor, uh, this kind of forced us to change our aesthetics as well. So looking into what we could use, uh, to kind of influence the S X on our bridge, uh, we looked at, um, the proposed monuments that are gonna be, uh, installed here in the city. Uh, so these monuments are being installed up by Valley Fair and then one on the west side of the city, uh, kind of by the Veering Roundabout. They have this natural stone. Um, they also have the the Shakopee logo pretty dominant, uh, on them as well. Uh, we looked at the proposed Parkway finding theme as well, um, taking elements from their so colors and design themes and things like that to kind of influence what we'd be doing on our bridge. Um, and then we also looked along the one sixty-nine corridor, obviously, uh, we wanna keep some consistency along that corridor. So, uh, we looked on the far west side of of town and the County Road sixty-nine bridge. Um, there on the piers of the, uh, the bridge and on the abutments as well, they use this architectural stone, so similar to the monuments. We thought we could kind of combine that into, uh, into our bridge as well. Um, and they also use this railing, uh, you can kind of see better here, um, that would match the, uh, the county or the county's pedestrian bridge that they're gonna be, uh, constructing. Um, we also looked around the metro too, um, at other designs, uh, for pedestrian bridges. So again, black metal railing, uh, seems to be a pretty common theme. Uh, it's also very, uh, minimalistic and sleek. Um, doesn't give a very bulky, uh, obstructive, you know, kind of look to it. Um, some railing was, or some, uh, lighting was also, uh, some loo- uh, looked at. So we, um, are gonna be changing our lighting from freestanding lights, um, into this handrail lighting. Um, it's much more cleaner. Uh, it was brought up by our consultant as a as an option and an alternative to the freestanding lights. And since we won't be using the green chain link fence, we kind of decided to drop the, uh, the green light poles, freestanding light poles as well and go with something a little bit more sleek and modern on this. So kind of culminating all these into one thing, this has kind of led us to our, uh, proposed aesthetic plan for the bridge. Uh, this is revised one. Um, so taking from the monument sign, the County Road sixty-nine bridge, we have the architectural stone that'll be used on the pillar, the, uh, uh, the piers and the abutments. Um, we're using this metal railing. It's also used on the county's pedestrian bridge, um, black metal railing. Um, we also took from the monument signs, the Shakopee logo, putting that predominantly over, uh, the one sixty-nine spans. Um, and then basically everything beyond the one sixty-nine spans that are directly over that is gonna be utilizing, uh, black chain link fence just to be more cost effective, um, going forward. It's not directly in the line of sight, so, um, it's not something that you're drawn to. So we decided to go with something slightly cheaper there. Um, the bridge itself will be pretty much just a concrete color to match other bridges along the corridor as well. And then, uh, going forward, we'll be matching, um, this bridge with the rest of the bridges kind of along the, uh, one sixty-nine corridor um, with the black metal railing, uh, as we go forward. So the whole goal of tonight is just to kind of get this in front of you guys, uh, let you, uh, see it, uh, how we kind of got to where we're at now. Um, and then kind of take any comments or, uh, considerations as, uh, uh, what we have and kind of go forward. But this is what we have now and we'll be kind of letting our consultant loose with these unless we have any comments or concerns.
Adam, thank you very much for your presentation and, uh, we'll start here. Counselor Whiting?
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, could you go back a couple of slides to the sixty-nine bridge, please? Uh, in that one, um, I know the argument was make sure we don't put, uh, uh, flower pots on there at the time. But, uh, uh, we really wanted to incorporate the components of some of that Shakopee brick color. And then, uh, this bridge had some features from the bridge down by, uh, Danger Fields with the concrete balls. Uh, and and of course, the light fixtures, which we talked about that. So I'd like to see, you know, in some of the stanchions, if you wanna go back to the picture of what the bridge has, uh, there you go. So you have some of these block, uh, components on the ends.
Yep.
Uh, if that could have some of that Shakopee brick color in that, and then if you could incorporate the little concrete ball, then I think they'd all be looking alike. I really like the Shakopee logo in there. I think there's been comments to make sure you can be able to read it and see what it is, uh, and we can get to that point when we need to. But, uh, keeping those all looking alike, uh, I think is important. So a couple of those aesthetics i- is my my point of view.
Counselor, uh, Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, a couple of questions. The, uh, looking at the top left, you got six feet on this fence. And then on the bottom right, you've got five feet on the fence. Is it five foot on the approaches and six feet on the crossing? Correct, yep. Okay. And then if you could go back to the actual placement of this crossing on one sixty-nine. There you go. Um, city engineer, Mister Lillahag and I had a conversation when council took a tour out to this location. And there seemed to be a conflict with an existing directional sign which would be just east of where this is located. I think it's looks like a a shadow. So that is drivers are coming from the west and going east, they're not missing that directional signage because of the crossing. So, um, is that why this is moved back? Which is something that we talked about and that was kind of an idea and I didn't know if it was possible. I don't. Did we consult with the city engineer on that location?
Yes, so this, uh, this location has been kind of, it's kind of the Goldilocks zone, if you will, between. So there is the east sign and there's also the, uh, western overhead sign too. Um, these, the placement is kind of utilized to maximize or, well, be able to have that legibility of that easternmost sign and the westernmost sign.
Okay. And MINDOT signed off on it too, so.
Correct.
Alright, that's the questions I had.
Other questions? Counselor Brennan?
I think this is, um, much more attractive design than the original one that we saw. I like this much better than the green, um, chain link fence with the cutout, um, on the top. Um, and I like the signature, um, the City of Shakopee, um, logo that's in in, um, lighted up on the side and I think that can, that that carries it through to the other memorial, um, the other signs that are out in the city. Um, you know, this is a entrance into our city, so I think it look, I think it looks, I think it looks pretty good. I like the lighting on the ground and the lower level lighting that's along the the sides of it. So I think it looks great.
Another one, if you have. Counselor Contreras?
I'll just add to what, um, counselor, uh, Counselor, uh, Whiting said. I I like hearing when I'm here and listening to, they were here before, so they they give you a little more, um, background to like when he told you to go back. And following that color of the brick is a great idea, you know, like exactly what what he was saying. And, um, if you can, you know, include what you can of of what he said, you know, like the little balls, that's great. But the new idea, the slick, um, clean, um, minimal look is awesome and the light, it it's it's pretty cool. And I do love the sign and like Counselor, um, Brennan said, it's, you're driving right into Shakopee and you see the sign, so that's perfect. It it looks good.
Counselor Whiting?
Were we done with property acquisition on this?
Uh, it's still ongoing right now.
Okay, is that it? I guess, uh, Counsel Lehman?
I got one more question. The, uh, can you get do an overview of what's proposed here with the two, without the lights on there? Okay, so if I'm understanding Counselor Whiting, he's saying put balls on top of the two pedestals on the ends.
If it can happen.
Now, my question is, if if we're gonna do that, we're probably gonna need a little bit clearer direction from us. So what I'm thinking is if we're gonna do that, it wouldn't be just a ball on top of the pedestal. It would actually be, you know, a stem rising up with the ball on it. So it's consistent with the sixty-nine bridge. Now the question is, do they actually light or are they just for looks?
Yeah, they're just aesthetics. If you wanna go back, they're only on a couple of the, uh, pedestals there.
Right, too, yeah. So we kind of wanna incorporate that look, but not necessarily functional.
Right, it's the same as the one down by Danger Fields Bridge too. Uh, they're just a a feature.
Two of them, one on each end, or four?
It'd be four, yeah. I I just, so we have consistency, that's all I'm thinking.
Alright.
Are others in favor of that?
I guess as long as it's not eight hundred thousand dollars or something.
No flower pots.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it's interesting. I, my comments on this, a couple of things is, you know, the Danger Fields Bridge or the old bridge across one oh one, the new bridge, um, the Marshall Avenue Bridge is getting reworked with a, uh, uh, pedestrian walkway on the west side. Eventually, we're gonna have a walkway as well on Adams or Marystown. Um, I really like the horizontal lighting on this new bridge. Um, I like that we're getting the stone brick veneer. I think, I I look around at communities all over the metro area and we're now I think, I, I look around at communities all over the metro area and wherever I travel and it's those little subtle things. And it's a, it's a, you know, whatever the cost is, I, you know, we're all conscious on cost. But I think these are really little things that go a long way to identify, um, the communities. Uh, a lot of them have their names on it or, uh, their logo. And so, um, I like our logo on it. I want to make sure that it's big enough, as already mentioned, that, um, you know, this is a, a sixty-five mile an hour roadway. You want to make it big enough. Also, maybe we can get that incorporated on the new ped bridge on Marshall. And then keep it in mind that we would, I would like to see it incorporated in the future, uh, on Marystown. Um, the black fence, I'm indifferent, uh, the green looks good. You know, blue is in our logo, if we can get blue, no. You know, I remember a big discussion when we were doing Marshall, I think we, one of the big discussions was getting a stripe, right? Um, had to be green, right? Um, times change and I know our look and logo and branding has changed. But, uh, try to tie it all together with the brick, the ball, um, and the, the logo would really say, hey, you're in Shakopee and I think that's great.
Sounds good. We can definitely make those changes and, uh, get those incorporated. Those should be fairly simple to do.
Thank you.
And you're just looking for input, right? Based off these things?
Yep.
No action required? Adam, great presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
All right, let's move ahead. Um, we have the bill list online, um, ten A. Any questions on that? Otherwise, we would have our liaison report and we'll start down here. Councilor Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor, but I don't have one tonight.
That is fine. It's a holiday season.
Nothing to report, sir.
Okay, Councilor Lehman?
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year report.
Councilor Brennan?
I'll slow everybody, are we all the whole thing down? I had a SPUC meeting last night, um, and, um, SPUC is currently working on service territory and this should be brought back in February to the SPUC, um, with hopefully at an agreement in place. Um, water average pumping currently is at three million gallons a day. That's compared to the summer pumping, which is at ten to fourteen, um, million gallons a day. Um, electric, um, is working with the Minnesota Valley Transit to place two heated transit shelters at Fourth and Atlet. Um, so that, that would be good, um, good partnership. Um, the commission received the Minnesota Department of Health PFAS sampling report. Um, everything is, um, shows low level of detections of PFAS. Uh, Minnesota Department of Health will be back in, in January eighteenth meeting, um, to answer any questions that the commission has. So if any council members would like to take a look at that report, um, and, and pass on messages to me, um, so that I can, I mean, ask them at the meeting, um, please do so. Um.
You said PFAS?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, what's PF?
Perkaflora?
Polyfluor-
There's, there's a couple of, perka and there's polyfora or whatever.
Yeah, it's all the, um, chemicals that are not, um, forever chemicals that aren't easily removed. Um, so they.
I think they were originated from a famous Minnesota mining and manufacturing company.
And where do we get this report from?
Minnesota Department of Health.
Is somebody going to supply that to us to see or do we go there to get it?
Um, it's on the website for SPUC. So if you would like a copy of it, um, let me know and I can get a copy of it.
Or I can go to their website and look at it?
Yep.
All right.
That's one of those chemicals that has been banned and it's still in the system.
Forever chemical.
It's a forever, it's out there.
Yep. Um, there's a delay in bill printing, um, so people can either go online, um, to see the bill and also pay online. Um, there's some options for online payment. Um, and while you're there, you could take a, take a, um, look at the, um, payments that you have on a regular basis, um, withdrawn from your account. Um, new rates are available on the SPUC website and, um, they'll be inserted in the next billing statements. I think that's it.
Councilor Lehman?
Do we know how long the delay on the billing thing is?
Um, it was a, uh, it was a week, um, and that will not really affect, um, people's options to make a payment um, because of the, um, holiday that's coming up. Um, so, you know, and, and still we encourage people to make their payments online. Um, or they can take a look at their bill online and make a payment by check and dropping it off at the, at the, um, facility or the other options that are available.
Yeah, you're good. All right, thank you. Or, I just want to comment too there, um, Councilor Brennan, uh, and actually, uh, wow, because in the last eighteen months, twenty-four months, uh, the city and the utility and they got highlighted in the newspaper last week. A great article about the strength of the partnership on both sides, uh, just had our pilot, um, the partnership, the collaboration, uh, highlighted in that article. Um, we've really come a long way and, uh, thanks to the utility, thanks to the, uh, City of Shakopee and their staff.
Yeah.
Very positive, so the, just quick comment on that.
Thank you.
Um, Mayor's report, I, you know, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. I do have a couple of items just to mention. Upcoming Thursday, uh, they're going to do a reveal for our new Zamboni, uh, coming out on Thursday at six thirty at the ICE Arena. Uh, the Shakopee Fire Department, uh, will be on hand and, uh, the Shakopee Fire Department, uh, the Zamboni is going to be, uh, wrapped as a, as a fire truck. So very exciting, um, please come down, uh, six thirty on Thursday and join us for that. Um, also this weekend, um, the community center is having a, uh, fitness open house on Saturday, January eighth from eight A M. to eleven. If you want to come out and try their classes, the equipment, it's free of charge for a couple hours to learn and, uh, see what the community center has to offer in our fitness program. So great opportunity.
That's for the, open for the public?
Yes, Saturday, January eighth, eight to eleven at the community center. So for free of charge, you can come in and take a little quick class or lift some weights or ride a bike or.
Ask questions?
Ask questions, buy a membership.
Have fun.
I agree.
Have fun, yep.
Uh, great opportunity. Um, but that's my mayor's report and, uh, we would move ahead to the administration report.
Nothing from administration, Mayor.
Item number eleven then, is there any other business before this council? Any other business? Seeing none? Councilor Brennan?
I make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two at seven o'clock P M.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Contreras for their discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned at seven fifty-seven.
Fifty-two.